6:07 PM. Let the record show that in attendance are Directors Sexton, French, and Norris. We're still waiting on Director Green. I'm sure he'll arrive shortly, probably got ... Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, I do. All right, is that better? Okay.
Your green light's on.
Yeah, my green light's on, so hopefully, is that better? Okay. I think we must have an older audience, maybe that's it.
(laughing)
Oh, just kidding, just kidding. I'm just joking. It's on, so.
Oh, that's better.
Great. There we go. Thanks, Bill. Well, I will actually, I'll speak louder then. I actually have a soft voice, so I'm sorry about that. Let's amend the record and show that Director Green is now here. Director Skirvin has called in and was unable to attend today's meeting. First on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting and the financial report?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda is accepted, then. Do we have any testimony from citizens on agenda or non-agenda items? First up, we could have Mark Christie, please.
Mark Christie, 3184 Northeast Loop Drive.
Thank you.
In notice here. I wanted to read what's been posted on the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association website. This was kind of a recap of last year's events in the summertime. So, Devils Lake Neighborhood Association recap for 2016. Congratulations to each and every one of the DNLA members for the accomplishments we collaboratively contributed to in 2016 on Devils Lake. Here are just a few of the highlights. Best recreational water quality in the last four years. Not one harmful algal bloom. Fantastic Fourth of July Boat Parade and Fireworks Show, third year. Many of our members have rolled up their sleeves and serve on DLWID committees and continue to do so. Great combination annual meeting and potluck on the point. Thanks Mitch and Dana. Other great news, DLWID Board Chair Kent Norris did a fantastic job filling in as interim lake manager and spent countless hours at the offices on campus of COCC. Thanks for your dedication to our lake, Kent. A huge shout out to Tina French and Bill Sexton for their timeless work also. DLWID recently hired, excuse me, DLWID hired a great interim lake manager, Tom Wood, who moved many projects forward and most likely will be retained as a consultant in the future. DLWID recently hired a full-time lake manager, Joshua Brainard, who is well-qualified and has moved to Lincoln City with his wife. He took the helm the 1st of December. I would encourage you to give him a call and welcome him aboard. A big thank you to Mitch Moore for his tireless behind-the-scenes work for DLNA and you. What's coming up? Election season again in May 2017 for DLWID board positions. Brian Green and David Skirvin positions will be on the ballot. More to accomplish on the committees we serve on in 2017. We are excited about the positive things that are happening on Devils Lake and the opportunity for more great things to happen in 2017. You all make a great difference. Go Team, Mark Christie, DNLA President. So, I just wanted to read that into the record, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Pat Dooling.
Pat Dooling, 4799 Northeast, East Devils Lake Road. As you know, I live most of the time in Portland and I've been snowed in for, which seems like months, and climbing the walls. But I finally got out of my cage and came down to an SOS meeting about three weeks ago and had the pleasure of meeting Josh. And I want to congratulate the board for your hard work and determination and searching and finding a special guy like him with not only an education background, but he's a hell of a nice guy.
Thanks.
Thank you, Pat.
I agree.
Is there anybody from the audience that didn't get to speak because they failed to sign up? Okay. Next, unfinished business. Committee briefings, we'll start with the sewer committee. Brian, do you want to?
Thank you, Kent. We do not yet have a resolution on the final form of the letter to the property owners in the proposed sewer project area. We're meeting tomorrow and hopefully we'll make some progress on that before our next board meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. I know with the weather and everything and other personal events, things have kind of slowed for a little bit, but I appreciate that we're still moving forward. Special Projects and Events Committee, do I have a report from them?
So, we've got a pretty big agenda on tap for Saturday morning at 10:00. We've got, we've combined, this will be our first combined group of our joint committees. We're going to discuss the joint committees, update committee names, the Special Project Events Committee, SPEC. We'll talk about that, so, that was pretty original, I thought, anyway. So, we'll follow up on storm event notification. I got to thank Bill and Josh for what they've done on websites and Bill and just keeping and working with Josh on letting us know what's going on when we have high-water events. So, that's been fantastic. I think Josh sent out an email notification today. And there was one also, and I'm guessing it was Steve Brown, that sent it out on the Devils Lake Neighborhood, kind of neighborhood friend.
What is that called? That app?
What is that called? That app. Nextdoor Neighbor.
Nextdoor.
That's it. So, great, great stuff. We're going to, I think Bill's invited a guest to talk about tsunami preparedness, so that'll be very, very good. We've got determined timing on communications ahead of the next fireworks display. We've got a possible SOLF project. I'm sorry, text just came through. It came up on my ... So, anyway, we're talking about an event that Kent and I chatted about, possibly doing a SOLF project, about doing some cleanup work around the lake on the streets that border the lake, so we'll have that discussion. We'll talk about miles in the fishing derby for 2018. We're also going to talk about the SOS Water Quality Planting Projects with Mary Rich's team. So, we're really excited for that meeting. Bill's also going to give us some information on the to-dos for assisting in the Thompson Creek E. coli, narrowing down to where that's coming from. And the other thing that I want to, I guess, point out with the combination of joining these two committees, and we discussed this in our last meeting prior to this joining of the two committees, is we don't want to get too many things on our list. What we want to do is determine the things that we can do extremely well and complete them, so that'll be one of the other discussion topics that we'll be talking about Saturday morning, too. And everyone's, anybody that wants to come is more than invited to come, and that's at 10 o'clock over at COCC. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, committee force, too. Septic inspection, there's no change, and since that committee has now merged with the Special Projects and Events Communications Committee, they'll no longer be meeting. Next, we have our Save Our Shoreline and Water Monitoring Committee. I think we have two members of that committee to report.
I'm Mary Ellen Rich, 4590 Northeast Loop Drive, and this is Jack Strayer. He'll introduce himself, but I'm going first. We would like to change the test sites a little bit for this year. We tested all last year and found that there's some useless sites and some sites that should be tested. So, I'll go over what we plan, what we propose to test, and it's 11 sites and then our, I used to be assigned this, but I'm retired, our control sample is the 12th one.
Mary, could you, before you do that, could you give us a little background on why we're looking at doing that and recommending that to the board?
Why is that, Kent?
Do you want to give the background, or should I?
You can.
Okay. When we started doing testing last year, we went ahead and kept with the previous year's protocols of testing 11 different sites. Those included Thompson Creek, Rock Creek, East Devils Lake State Park, the D River Dam area, the north shore of the D River Dam area, Devils Lake Campground, Regatta Park. We took a Midlake sample, one at Hostettler Park, one at K Street, and then one at Sandpoint Park. And as we were testing those sites, it became apparent after about halfway through the season that at two of the sites, what had been done in the past at Thompson Creek and at Rock Creek, we were testing at a culvert that actually fed into the lake. And as we tested those sites, we found that especially E. coli, numbers were high. And yet, when we went just inside in the actual lake itself and started testing in there, that by the time the water from those tributaries came to the lake, that the E. coli samples were way down in numbers and they didn't register in the red zone, so.
We had adequate filtration in those two sites.
Right. And so, it was, what, as the committee, we talked about this, and we thought that what really we should be publishing to the public is the quality of water that's actually in the lake, not at the tributaries that are coming into the lake. Does that make sense? And so, what has happened over the years is we've been giving these high ratings to our tributaries, and they're giving out really false information about what's really taking place in the lake.
False positives.
For those users that are using the lake. So, what the water quality in SOS Committee is recommending is that instead of testing the culverts at both Rock Creek and Thompson Creek, that we move those testing sites actually in the lake itself, which gives a more accurate picture of what's actually happening in the lake.
And the 11 sites allow for sampling from the shore with an extension, and we have the extension group for things that can reach out four feet, three feet, two feet, or from a boat, and it's really easy to do from the boat. So, we're hoping that with our partnership with Oregon State, that we can work out which way they want to test these 11 sites. Then our 12th site is a water tap from the lab, just to say, okay, if we find something there, there's a problem, too, but that one is our control site. So, the first one is Thompson Creek, and we're going to take this site with your approval, out by the no-wake buoy where Thompson Creek and the channel come into the lake.
Before you go into the canal?
Yes, the no-wake buoy where if a boat was coming in, they slow down right there before they come into the canal.
Yeah, previously, we would stop next to the road and actually take it on the Rock Creek side of the road, and so the water that was coming from Rock Creek, we were testing that and publishing those results. And we just felt that it really wasn't a good indication of what's taking place on the lake.
It's not representative of the quality of the water in the lake.
I agree.
So, where do you want to move from?
We're moving from, in front of the culvert by the East Devils Lake Road, out into the lake where the no-wake buoy is at the start of the channel, back.
And we're talking about Rock Creek now?
No, Thompson Creek.
Or Thompson Creek.
Thompson Creek. And that's the one that has been registering high E. coli.
Right.
Yeah. So, the second one is Rock Creek, the other one that we're talking about. And we were taking that out on the road where it used to flood and is now flooded. We would take it on the side toward the lake, off the bridge, which is representative of how that's doing, but not how the lake is registering. So, we moved out to outside where the water comes, where the Rock Creek comes in, but taking it from a boat out there.
So, on all these sites, or the two sites that you're going to change now, you're changing the scoop spot?
Thompson Creek.
And the scoop spots are now going to be both in the lake?
They're going to be in the lake.
So, you're going to do all of your testing by boat, then?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. And we have a boat that Oregon State could use, or we can go out with the Oregon State tester, because we're going to have to teach them anyway, so, it'll work. The East Devils Lake Park in front of the dock, that stays the same. The D River Dam by the lake gauge, right there, and I asked Bill if he goes down through the blackberry bushes on the rocks and gets it, and that's where he measures the lake anyway. So, we get the lake level there and we scoop out into the depth of the water, because you have to go down and then turn it over and come up, yeah. So, the D River Dam, we're eliminating the one that's across the channel that's going out of the dam.
At Hostettler?
No, the one across from the gauge on that, where it's really shallow.
That's Hostettler?
No, that's the north shore one, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's the north shore.
And it's really hard to get a sample there because it's just sand and little rivulets, so you're really not testing the lake there either. So, we eliminated that one.
So, how far out are you reaching at the staff gauge?
At the staff gauge, the length of our little grabber thing, so, like that, yeah. And then we go down with it upside down because it has the little activator, and then turn it over and come up.
So, that's in the main current?
Mm-hmm.
So, since you eliminated the north shore, have you added one somewhere else?
We added one at the Marina, because we aren't getting down that far usually, and that's a public access.
Blue Heron?
The Blue Heron.
Okay.
Yeah, just like we're saying in front of the dock, right in there at the Blue Heron then. So, we think that'll give us a little bit better look at that area. The Regatta Park, of course, in front of the dock, Devils Lake Campground in front of the dock. Midlake sample is 10 to 15 feet of water, so we just look around in the same. With the probe that we're looking at, that will give us GPS coordinates so that we can always take it at the same place, so that's going to be an advanced technology for us. The Hostettler Park, I called it Homes, but I was wrong, in front of that dock. Blue Heron Landing is an addition then, in place of the other dam one. It makes sense to take it at both sides of the dam.
Well, and that's a pretty used finger of the lake, so, it should be tested.
And then K Street access, which took a lot of searching to find where that was last year, but it's a little teeny-tiny park thing that we, it's better to get it by, from the boat. And we're just out and we get in about where if you wade it out, you would be sampling. So, that works on the K Street, so in about four feet of water is what I put there. And Sandpoint Park, just kind of inside where the swimming area is, but about four feet off the shore. And then our control sample, so.
So, what about the site where we've had several spills from the city's pump going down off of 26th Street? Have we ever tested that area?
No, we could add it, but what we've concentrated on is public access areas.
Yeah.
And what we talked about at our committee meeting was, what is the goal of water testing?
Right.
Are we in the public safety realm, or are we testing our government agency's ability to? And we could, at some point, if we see a problem, we could add that test.
Well, and you can always do an emergency test if there was a spill, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because I know that has, even though it's not a public access, it has been an area of public concern when that happens.
I think that's how Thompson Creek started getting tested up by the culvert, was that we could see that was a problem, you know? But we can do all of this by boat, and we're really testing the lake quality.
Right.
That's our mandate, is to test the lake quality. But if the board deems that we need to check that, we can always add that.
I just think for, there was, I think, maybe some misinformation out there when those spills happened and, you know, for public policy, you know, of, you know, yes, we know there was a spill, yes, we tested it, and here's what the results were. So, maybe only if. And the city has to notify us if there's a spill?
Right, right.
So, maybe that would be our trigger.
So, then I would trigger, yeah.
At that point, we would go out and add that as a 13th test.
Great.
You know, I would still like to see you taking samples from Thompson Creek and Rock Creek.
Back in there.
Not attributed that, not attributing that to, you know, what's in the lake, but separately, but, you know, I think it's important to know what's coming in from those two sources.
Yeah, I don't think there's any reason that.
But I think it should be separated out from in-lake, you know.
Well, we have offered, what's the name of the agency that goes up Thompson Creek?
Salmon Drift Creek Water Sheds Council.
We've offered to help them test, to go up high and test until we see a problem, deal with it, test.
Right.
And I think they've put their efforts somewhere else on that issue, so we haven't been enlisted to help with the testing on that. So, that's why the committee decided, let's just make sure our lake is safe.
Well, what I'm saying is, I think part of that is knowing what's coming in from those sources, and, you know, I'd like to see the testing continue if that's not overly burdensome, those two extra sites. But separate out the reporting from saying that that's actually what's occurring in the lake, just to know.
We could call it stream testing or something.
What's good or bad or indifferent coming in from Rock Creek.
Our two ingresses.
Well, I think what we could do is, you know, for consistency of testing of what's taken place, is continue to test those spots, but as we publish the weekly lake quality reports, that we only report that lake testing sites.
That's.
Because it's alarming to the public.
But so, we know what it looks like.
Yeah, it's kind of a black eye on the lake if you have reds, but then come to find out it's not really the lake that's red.
The lake is clear, it's red up here.
From a recreational point of view, if you're testing, you know, I don't know, 50 feet out from Rock Creek and Thompson Creek and the water's fine, then, you know, you shouldn't be attributing that bad culvert site to lake quality.
Right.
But I think we need to know.
We could continue to test at those old sites, but not include them in our report.
And maybe, Josh, I don't know if this is outside of your purview or not, but maybe we could make a new table just for the Rock Creek site and just for the Thompson Creek site, so they're not even in the same table as the lake water.
That shouldn't be a problem at all, and we can hash out the details.
Because then we still have all the data and the historical data, but for somebody that is pulling it up to, you know, see if they want to bring their kids and their dogs down in the lake this weekend, you know, it doesn't show red stuff in our lake.
No, those are, I believe those are independently published and posted anyway, so it shouldn't be an issue to separate those out.
What do you think of that idea of, we could publish it, but just in a completely separate table, if we do upstream testing of our tributaries or something along those lines?
Yeah, that's them driving it, exactly something like that.
Great. No, I think that's.
Do you need a motion from us to change those sites?
Maybe we should just always approve the test sites, you know, before we start testing each summer.
Well.
Be a good thing.
I guess, the reason why this is brought before the board, not only for their knowledge, but as we talked about in committee, with regard to what we're going to address later in the meeting, is the fact that the tort liability for recreation liability immunity has changed with the court decision this last summer, and we just want to make sure that the committee is informing the board on, hey, these are the test sites that we're doing, and this is the reasoning behind it, and we want to make sure that the board approves those things instead of doing them independently, and so.
Yeah, everybody should be protected as much as possible there. Well, I like the idea. And if I were voting, I would vote yes.
Jack?
We've seen Jack Strayer.
Okay, I'm Jack Strayer, 1550 Northeast Lake. Is it working?
You might need to move it a little closer, Jack.
Do you all have the paper that we put out?
Mm-hmm.
Have you had a chance to read it at all?
This one?
Yeah.
The August 16?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can go through a bit of it or answer questions, whatever way's most productive for you guys. The SOS program, as we envision it, is planting aquatic plants in the lake. The lake, pardon me?
No, go right ahead.
The lake is not dead, but it's in a coma. If you go out there with an underwater camera, there's no vegetation on the bottom. And vegetation is the key to the life cycle of all the plants and animals that live and flourish in the lake, and there's a lot of those that are not flourishing right now. The best paragraph that I've seen came from the Corps of Engineers and the Texas Department of Fish and Wildlife on the justification for aquatic plants. And they say the role of plants in aquatic systems is significant. Aquatic plants provide valuable fish and wildlife habitat, serve as the food source for waterfowl and other aquatic wildlife, improve water clarity and quality, reduce the rates of shoreline erosion and sediment resuspension, and help prevent the spread of nuisance exotic plants. In other words, if we can, if we can take the shallow areas and plant them with plants that work well for the lake, then we've taken up the most valuable habitat for the exotics that are going to try and get in there. After a short work on this project, it became really clear that it's very complex. There's a lot of things going on. If you're going to plant plants in the lake, first of all, you've got to find out who the owners are. There's private owners, we know about those, but there's also government agencies, state, county, tribes, there's commercial outfits. They all have different needs as far as plants go. I would envision a planting protocol that would say that if you don't want plants in your area, you don't have to plant them. There's no, this is not a government edict, it's an opportunity to help make the lake breathe and become more vibrant. So, you need to find out who they are, and then you've got to find out what plants work. There should be some reeds that are really close to the shore, and some that are immediate, and some that are big. I know there's a, when I first came here in the early 80s, there was a set of bulrushes that came out from one of the points where that house was a 360 view, and right now it's like two feet of water or so. And it's a hazard of navigation because people just come truckin' by there, and whoa. But if it had the plants on it that it had before, then it would be, they wouldn't go through that quite as, quite as fast as they do. Also, we need to develop an owner's guide, and the guide would be what plants are available, how to plant them, how to analyze your soil, can you tell whether they'll succeed or not, things like that. We've got to coordinate with government regulators. The information we're getting from the Department of State Lands is if you don't change the level grade of the soil, you can plant what you want. Well, in our situation, you can plant it and protect it from the grasscar. So, that's the situation right now until they're gone. So, we've got to have a planning guide to do that. The government regulators. An important part of any plan is that you need to monitor the lake plants, both to tell how well you're doing. how well you're doing and how, if there are other invasive or unwanted species that have taken off, and you must be able to deal with those. In looking at this whole project, you know, if I were going to manage it and do it myself, I would want to get the advice of a good aquatic biologist. And I think it was suggested that possibly we can lap this into a state contract with the university, and either have someone that is a botanist, a aquatic botanist, or be one person that can do both, and would help design it. So this plan is really a plan for a plan. There's no assignments, there's no tasks, there's no due dates, there's no resources, so it's not a plan. But it's a plan for the plan, and to talk about the complexity of what a complete plan would be. The one thing that you people would be interested in, the board would be interested in, is you've got to set the rules. You've got to tell what the scope that you're willing to undertake, how much money you're going to put to it. You would have to give authority to acquire a botanist services. And even if you're, if we're saying, okay, we've got this plant we want to have for the lake, how do you get it? We've either got to have a nursery in the lake, or a nursery run out of the lake, or Kent was talking about, a government nursery where you give them the plants and they propagate it. And so there's lots of ways to do it, but we just need to figure that out. My other conclusion, because this is so complex, is that we need a workshop where we can just sit down, go through line by line, saying, you know, we've got this big thing, that if we were going to do the whole thing, this is what we have to do, but let's take this piece, and this piece, and this piece, and put a limited amount of money with it, and do that, and then we'll build on it, and kind of make a more detailed plan and resource and objectives.
Do other lakes have, you know, a planting guide, or a, I mean, I'm always looking to steal something and, you know, tweak it rather than recreate it.
I scan the internet every once in a while for that, and there's a bunch of them in Minnesota, Minnesota and Florida, and they kind of have a little different situations than we have.
Well, the other thing is-
We can take pieces of it.
Yeah, we do have a planting guide that was published, and we've-
Years ago.
And I've looked, we've tried to find a date when that was published, and maybe, you know, more than anybody else, Brian, because it didn't have a date on it at all.
It was after I got on the board, so it's got to be-
Within the last 10 years.
Yeah.
2009, wasn't it?
But I think, I mean, if I can interject here, I think what this is, the Jack and the committee put together this draft in the hopes that it would be the starting point for developing a plan for aquatic vegetation in the lake, and so that we could develop a firm plan and path in which we could go and look at how we can effectively get a goal of approximately 20% of plants back in the lake. I think that's-
I did some calculations, and if you take, I saw that the perimeter of the lake is like 13 miles, if you take the first 10 feet of that, it's about 2 and 1/2% of the lake. So I don't know-
Of the entire perimeter?
Yeah.
Oh.
But, you know, other places where it's three or four feet out, three or four feet depth, 100 feet out, they're going to have more plants there probably than the others. But-
Well, and the other good thing too, I'd say, is that as we discussed that, is last year, I think on our property, we planted about 800 to 1,000 plants, and most of those were in the water. By next spring, we'll see how far, what the winter has done to those plants, and how many have survived, and so I think next year, from at least the limited amount of plants that we put in on our project, to see the survival rate will give us an indication of what can happen, because most of those plants were planted in pretty shallow water.
And rocky.
And rocky in some places, and so I think we'll have at least one test site in which something has been done.
Where did you get your plants?
They were grown in a nursery in Eugene.
Oh, okay.
But you don't think about it when you're on top of the lake, it's the soils everywhere, every place are different. Like, I've got kind of a shale, kind of a rocky area, and I know that there's some canals back there where I tried to get my boat back in as far as I could, and I got back till I got stuck, so I got my paddle and went down about five feet, and just playing mock.
You can run a rod like 12 to 15 feet down in front of our place.
Yeah, yeah. So there's all kinds of soils, and not everything's going to grow in every soil, so an aquatic botanist would be someone that would be very important to have.
So Jack, can you tell me, like, you have a friend with fish wildlife, or a retired friend with fish wildlife, and they do an annual fish count?
They did that until they got their budget cut about three years ago.
Okay, so now that they don't have a budget, nobody does it anymore, how do we know what stage these grass carp are in? I know they're old, but I know there's a, still a pretty good pod of them out there that are still working, so.
Right. They don't know.
Okay, so in your plan-
Yeah.
-we need to incorporate the fish in the consumption rate and the longevity of the fish that are there, because if, you know, we start this aquatic plan and discover that all we're doing is feeding the grass carp, you know, where do we go from there?
That's where, I don't know what they eat. Like, if you planted a lily pad, like a real pretty pink lily or something, probably eating the stalks, or they eat the roots, and you could protect the roots.
I don't think they eat any of those stinking things.
Well, the yellow ones, I know they don't like, but I don't know if they eat like the others.
Well, I would say that-
They have a pink or a white or a yellow.
By this time, anything on the surface or anything subsurface that's still there, that they won't eat it. And particularly, you'll notice that at the Third Street Canal, because that flourishes with vegetation, that they don't eat it for some reason.
But when they eat it, do they eat the roots, the tender shoots, or do they eat the stalks?
That's something your camera would have to tell you.
If they eat the roots, then the stalks could grow up and it could still be.
Yeah, we had a, initially had a fellow that fed them, raised them, and whatnot for a year. He'd be-
Oh, John Lobella.
Yeah, would be, have a little bit of knowledge in that, but there again, we'd have to get him to come and explain what-
They ate everything when he was pulling the weeds out. He just had them in a pool, and they ate the entire weed in the pool, whether they do that.
Was it grass or lilies or?
It was-
It was whatever-
Mill foil.
The pad?
Real long-
Bill foil or whatever, the long stuff that we had when we were, before we put them in.
So anyway, I think we should be aware of that fact too, is if they're dwindling out, and there's no sign of getting a permit to renew them, were we going to plant the lake again and then watch out?
Well, I would think we'd protect them in some way, and you could put a temporary fence around, and then when they're gone, take the fence out.
Yeah, the fence has to be temporary to feed them.
Right. And that'd be a way to start it. But if you look at the lake and you go around it, and like, there's what, 440 residences, but there's a lot of state land, canal on each side, around the finger-
Indian land.
Around the tribal areas up across from the marina, there's a big shallow area there. So we just need to look at it and develop a plan to work. But as far as trying to get onesie-twosies residences to do something, it may not be, maybe more productive to work with the state or the tribes or the county or something.
But I think what the committee was asking is that with this document now, we can start to put together a definite plan and steps in which we should take in order to revegetate the lake.
I do have a question though with regards to the grass carp permit, because to the best of my knowledge, even though we don't have it, we haven't obtained that permit. And my understanding was, is, you know, the new science on that is that you can have a balance of fish and vegetation. Where are we with that? Would we, I mean, are you, I kind of think I know where you're coming from, Jack, you don't want those in the lake.
All the research I've seen is, and from managers of some big lakes back east, they said, well, I'm smarter than everybody else, I can just put a few little grass carp in there, and we'll just take care of it. I says, well, that's not quite doing it, so I'll put a few more, and then you get to the tipping point, and then they're all going.
Which is what we did.
Yeah.
I believe, and I may be wrong, but I believe our permit applications with the ODFW, but they're not acting on it at the moment, so they've changed their rules, and so we're just kind of waiting until we, we're at a situation, I think the advice has been in the past, to wait until we are close to needing it, and then put it before them in a different package, so.
Well, and if we do the, or when we do the aeration project, that will change the dynamic too of whether we need them or not.
And that was ODFW's last official comment on the grass carp permits that I know of, was that they wanted a couple of years of data post-aeration project to determine if we will need it and if they want to allow it.
Which makes sense, because maybe we don't need them.
Great. Well, go ahead.
Your landscaper botanist said that there was a way that works by putting the grass carp in a big cage, and you put them over the plants you want to eat. And they worked that in one big lake up in Washington, and to me, that sounds, I don't know.
It's like a fish playpen.
That's the only one I've heard of that somebody has said that it works.
Very good. Well, I appreciate myself all your hard work in this and putting this together, and I think that the board does too, and you're right, I think we do need to develop a firm plan.
Oh, man, if we could make that happen, it'd be the best thing that could happen to the lake. I mean, 20% coverage is the gold standard of the lake, it'd be a different lake.
Well, and it would be so helpful, because even with all the knowledge that I collect being on here and stuff, I still scratch my head at what to do in front of our place because of my situation. So, you know, each situation is different, and I don't want to plant spruce trees, so unfortunately, it's like it was the day I bought it.
But another thing we could do is get some bird people that know about what their forage and habitat is for nesting and stuff, so we can plant the right kind of plants. I know that the willows, if you plant those next to the, the red-winged blackbirds love those. To me, a real plus for the lake.
Yeah, those are cool birds.
Thank you. With regard to save our shorelines, then, also under that, we have, Josh, do you want to, I know this might be a little out of order, but I don't see it elsewhere, do you want to talk a little bit about the water probe? I know, have, give us an update on what you found as far as information on the cost and how we might be able to fund that?
All righty. We've heard back from YSI of an official, unofficial email quote for the price of the water probe equipment. Fully loaded out, it's about $21,000. The good news is, with that price came an opportunity, we recently had a meeting with the Confederated Tribe of the Sloughs Indians, and they're a very environmentally minded and conscious organization, and they encouraged us to apply for their charitable grant. So I am preparing that application right now, and I should have it submitted to the tribe by next week. The extra good thing about that, of course, is that grant cycle is quarterly, so we don't have to wait a whole year like we do with a lot of these other larger grants, like with the Water Resources Department. So fairly quickly, we'll start getting this feedback and getting it in their process. So if everything goes well as it should there, we may have some future opportunities as well to work on our other various projects through committees and through the board, so we're very excited about that opportunity. YSI is giving me an official quote, and I'll be sending that with a grant application next week.
Very good, yes. Appreciate the tribe bringing that up in your meeting, or you bringing that up, whatever, that they're supportive of what's going on with the lake and how they can best help us.
They definitely are, very environmentally conscious group of people, and very nice people to work with.
That's exciting.
Thanks for pursuing that, Josh. I'm sure it'll help us develop our story for the lake.
So are we going to have a definitive answer on that by next meeting? Is that correct, or?
We won't have grant approval on that. It's, I think, March 15th or 31st, I'm not exactly sure, is the end of the next grant cycle, so fairly quickly.
Okay.
And then I believe, they said 30 days from the grant application date, so that puts us somewhere around April, middle of April or so, so right about when we need to really start getting into our sampling season, so it could time out really great. I also spoke to YSI, whether we get the grant funding or not, and they said it's approximately 10 days to put the equipment together, so if it comes to that and we need to pursue funding out of our own resources or other options, we'll know at least ahead of time, and it won't take that long to get the unit together if we can arrange the funding, so.
Is it a total, a total grant?
It would be, yeah, because the tribe, like many other grant organizations and applications, include in-kind donations, of which Dilwood has a lot of in-kind donations, given all the sampling and all the efforts of our community to make these things happen and get these numbers and this data. I've incorporated that into the grant application as part of it, since it is directly related to the equipment purchase.
So that's beneficial then for us to show them that we're engaged in making it better?
Definitely, definitely, and we, and you know, we have the equipment to utilize as well, to count those in-kind donations, the boat, truck, these other purchases the district has and assets that we can put to full use.
Great. Any other questions from the board?
Not by me.
All right. Next, I guess we move to projects. Do you want to give us an update? I guess this is where you come in, Josh.
Again, huh? The dredging project, I'm working on currently searching for a contractor. I'm going to get up with Nathan Knott shortly and see if he's interested in maybe kind of rekindling and repursuing that work with a modified plan. We're considering maybe not taking out the full amount that was initially permitted. Due to equipment limitations, we can't reach that far with it, but we can get a fairly decent amount out of there on that one side as far as we can from Hossatler, to be able to make a channel, and our, the goal is there, is that the additional materials, which we know can be very light and fluffy in a lot of these areas, we'll just kind of cave in into that channel, and we won't, of course, get the full depth and benefit of that if we were able to remove the total amount of permitted material, but we will definitely get a large benefit and some increased water velocity flowing through there as well, is the hope.
I have a question for you, Josh. Since you've been here, and we've had pretty significant storm surges, and what was it last week that we thought we were going to have to do the dredging? Do you think material gets pushed over the dam on a regular basis when there's storm surges like that, just from your observation?
You mean from the ocean side?
Right, so do you think sand is continually going that far east?
There's definitely some buildup there, and it's really hard to tell because the area is just so dynamic, but like we saw, it was plugged up one day, and we barely had trickles coming out of there, and then hours later, it's a rushing river again. So it's really, it's difficult to know. I would say there's more of a chance of a little bit of salinity going through there, seeing the tidal action than anything.
Then, I guess why I'm asking is because one of the, and I'm glad you brought it up, is because I was thinking, any material that we can get out of there would be better than none, and kind of the same thing, if we build a channel, then, you know, it'll move to the north anyhow. And so I guess I was just wondering, you know, if we don't get all of it out, is it likely that, you know, in a year, that what we do take out is going to fill up again, or it, you know, how much material?
I can answer that.
Okay.
So 20 years, 19 years ago, Ocean Lake Sand and Gravel went in there and dug out that whole canal, and so within the last 20- And so within the last 20 years, that much tidal sand has filled in that area. And if you'll look back in, in the archives to aerial photographs, that river channel has been historically on the south side of the river. It will never be on the north side of the river because the bedrock won't allow it to. It's shallower on the south side, so that's where the current, well, it's always gonna be.
Yeah, because when I was a kid, it was, that's where the docks were.
On the south side.
Yeah, on the south side, and that's where we did swim.
Yeah.
Well, I think the interesting thing was is, how many weeks ago was it that it was plugged up? Three weeks ago, three weeks ago, Josh and, and Bill and I went down there on a Sunday morning and it was pretty clogged and Josh in his tennis shoes, Bill in his tennis shoes, and I went home to get, I was smart and went home and got hip waders, chest waders, excuse me. And that, the, if you, I don't know if you observed the, the, the lake and the river, but it was clogged up with a lot of, a lot of weeds, a lot of logs and everything. And the three of us worked down there for about four hours and there was very little coming out. Bill didn't go home, he waited for four hours and up to his knees or higher in the cold water. Josh was, he just dug with the shovel down there and we opened that up and we just got enough flowing that the next day, we came back and, boy, it had changed substantially just by removing a little bit. And then, but we still weren't sure that that was enough to unplug the, the river. And then we came back the following day and that was a Tuesday morning, I believe, and it had scoured itself out. So just that, I believe, the little bit, the four hours that we spent there just moving logs around and trying to create a channel made a difference and we didn't have to get somebody in there to dredge.
So we, we can count on you next time, too?
Yeah. And, and we can count on you too. Next time, next time with chest waders, I hope.
Yeah, I'll be smarter.
So really, freeing that bottom part helped, you know, flush all of that away. And so that made a big difference.
That's cool.
Let's see. I, I think we've already covered lake aeration. How about our intern coordination process?
Everything's great. Tom met me over at OSU a couple of weeks ago and we had an excellent meeting with, wow, there were four representatives from different colleges there and there were at least a couple others that weren't able to make it to that meeting that we passed the information along to. And they're super interested in partnering with us and all the opportunities we can afford here at Devil's Lake with our, our rich history and data that we have. In addition, the, the good that can be done here. We spoke about all the things we've discussed throughout the committees and through the board as far as the opportunities for interns between sampling, even their engineering school is interested, potentially doing projects. Currently, all those department heads and representatives are talking amongst themselves and getting together with their, their own committees and boards to find out which and what students and what timing they want to put together to get involved. But, once, once they get their side organized and know of how they want to approach things, then there will undoubtedly be another meeting and it looks like we're gonna make some good progress. We don't have a guaranteed timeline that we will have interns this year, but we don't not have that as well. They're, like I said, they're working within their departments and as soon as they make the, the traction of progress they need to, then we'll, we'll move forward with that.
So Josh, you know what actual categories they're focusing on?
I know that we just sent a fourth description. We initially said three. The fourth one we sent was for, specifically for aquatic vegetation involving students in, in those colleges over there of ag sciences and biology, to see who that would be a good fit for. We also had the one for sampling, you know, I can't recall the other two right now that we had said.
So it's four different?
Yeah, four, four total ones that we worked with the departments at OSU as to what they felt would fit, you know, their students that were looking for internships. But we have a fairly comprehensive set, I believe, of those, those four different proposals into them. And they each, all the department representatives have a copy of all those proposals and that's, that's what they're doing now is they're matching those up with students and.
And you're getting pretty positive feedback from the people that are gonna be engaging with.
Definitely, definitely. The only one representative that was, I'm not so sure would be as benefited from this program was forestry. Typically, they're a little more upstream, however, they certainly have the information as well and they're considering it. But the Department of Ag Sciences and Biology and Engineering were very excited. Engineering, what I'm very excited about as well, because I would really like to have eventually a, a lake depth gauge where we can have it maybe fed into our website so everyone can just see what depth the lake is at all the time in real time. And their engineering sciences majors work on sensors and technology like that, so I was very excited that maybe we can.
That'd be cool.
Even make some, some new progress here, totally new progress, so.
Yeah. I'm sure they got a lot of that to offer.
Oh, yeah.
I, I would think that we'd be able to, you know, have some students start planning on something this spring if, if those were gonna come about, so let's hope for the best.
Absolutely, and I'm, I'm definitely staying in more than weekly contact with Danielle, our main contact at OSU, a great person to work with. So they're, they're working on it and they know we're ready.
Great. Thanks, Josh. Thanks. Next, under new business, last meeting, there, I believe there was an announcement for, we have three vacancies on the budget committee. And to date, we, unless I'm wrong, we have three applicants. They are Steve Brown, Larry Rich, and then former budget committee member Susan Walke. I don't know if the rest of the, the, the board has had a chance to review these, but gosh, I, I think they're all great candidates and I'd like to see all of them come to, be a part of our budget process.
Do you need a motion?
I think we do, I think.
And can we do them together or do they need to be individual?
We can have a discussion. Is there any other discussion around these candidates for any of us? I think all three of them are known to us.
Yeah, they're known and they'd be great and we appreciate your application. I move that we appoint these three individuals to the budget committee.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. You now, we now have three new members to our budget committee. Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a motion to adopt a resolution number 2017-02 recommending restoring recreational immunity rights. Josh, could you, I, just as I was driving up to the, to our meeting today, I, I heard you on the radio describing what, what this was, and if you could give us a, a brief description, again, I'd appreciate it, and then we can go ahead and read the resolution and.
Sure. I'll give you a very brief description of recreational immunity. It was a law that was broad in its scope, protected public landowners, private landowners, and agents of those landowners was how it was traditionally interpreted. Last summer, it was reinterpreted by the Supreme Court that those extensions of, of liability would, would no longer be applied under recreational immunity. So essentially, any one person, private landowner, public landowner, employees, board members could be held responsible in a lawsuit if one had came up in relation to those lands. Special District Association of Oregon has put out a couple of documents and publications. I put a few over there and give them to our board members as well. And they do a very good job at going into more detail. Essentially, it just really upsets the way that everything has been done, really. It broadly affects a lot, a lot of people in the, in the public and private realm and people who in good faith have even donated their lands to the public for public use. So we think it's, it's very important. I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with David Gomburg as well. He said that this is definitely on their radar. I told him our plans here were to discuss and potentially sign this resolution. He asked that I provide that to him as well, so he has it for the future.
Great, thank you. I, I trust that, I, I know I received personally in the mail from SDAO information regarding this and had planned on bringing this before the board, so I'm glad that this was put together by them. This was, the resolution really is about restoring those recreational immunity rights to all public employees, their volunteers, boards, landowners and such. And so I would move that we make this resolution and, and submit it to our legislature in order to have them develop a ORS statute or whatever has to be done in order to recreate those immunities so that board members, private landowners and volunteers and such can be, can be held such that they're, they will not be liable for any tort liability based on accidents that may occur on the properties that they're in charge of.
Josh, I'm sorry, can't, did David say that they're going to bring a bill forward to fix this, or what?
Basically, they're still in the, in the working on it stage. They're collecting information. I think that's really the same thing the special districts are doing right now, collecting these resolutions from all the districts to, to make sure that they go in and they have adequate representation.
So the special districts lobby is, is the one passing these out to, okay.
Yeah, but the ultimate goal, I mean, the only way they can fix it is with legislation.
Right.
Yeah.
But this would give them a guide to what the legislation should look like, I guess? Or what the special districts, you know, that it would include employee agents and volunteers?
I think it's just political, it's just political support.
Right.
They know what it needs to look like. It's just.
Right.
You know, given the critical mass of political support to get it done.
So I move to approve the resolution number 2017-02, resolution that Devil's Lake Water Improvement District Board of Directors recommending restoring recreational immunity rights.
I second the motion. Any further discussion? Do I need to read the motion, do you think, or the resolution, or should we just adopt it as written?
Well, it's incorporated in your motion by reference, so you don't have to read it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution 2017-02 is passed. Thank you. Do we have any further new business that's not on the agenda?
I have something.
Okay.
Um, as I'm sure everybody knows, Miles Schlesinger has been working tirelessly on several events, but, and Miles, do you want to come up and fill in where, where I am probably gonna leave some holes? Most recently, he's been working on the, the fishing derby and putting, trying to put together a really neat event at Regatta Park and has hit a, a wall with the city of Lincoln City regarding having food and alcohol vendors at Regatta Grounds and, for that matter, all city parks, I believe. And I spoke last week, I believe, with the VCB director, Ed Dreistat?
Dreistat.
And he really wanted some support because Miles has been showing up and, as, as a citizen, but he wanted support from, Ed said, a letter from the board and even representative from the board showing up to city council and requesting this would, would be really beneficial. So I was hoping that we could direct Josh to draft a letter from the board and send it to the city, and I'm assuming it's Parks and Rec director is who we would want it to go to first and maybe CC the council and administration, but supporting the idea that we would like to see that ordinance changed. And also, if people can come to the council meeting, is it this Monday night, right, Miles?
This Monday night. I'd like to tell the board, in case they don't remember, that I was the original organizer of the Devil's Lake Dash, which is now brought in excess of 500 people, I think, and they're scheduled for the first weekend in May. But this, in the past, we have always had a local food vendor and the jet ski association has brought various people that gave them rides on fancy jet skis and showed their wares for the new things that were coming on the market. They have now decided, after, I've lived there 25 years and seen the Carp Festival for nine years and all kinds of food vendors and outside activities, they have approved the Devil's Lake Dash. They have given the Devil's Lake Dash $5,000 so that they can promote the event further out. But now they are restricting vendors and food vendors so that they can't feed the crew there. And that is the most ridiculous thing I've experienced yet with the city of Lincoln City. And I built a house here, so I know that they are very difficult to work with sometimes. I am now on the planning commission, but I need some support from the board to go to Monday night's meeting that starts at 6:00 and testify in the public hearing because the city manager, who I like and have met through my work on the sewer committee, has decided that food vendors aren't allowed as they don't want any vendors there. And that is a stupid decision because how do we feed 85 skiers on a 45-minute lunch break and fulfill?
So my understanding is, and, and this is from Ed, is that they researched the, the deed of the Regatta Grounds and this is specific to the Regatta Grounds, and the gentleman that, that gave that land said?
In 1934.
Right.
To a committee that doesn't exist.
Exactly, and so.
During prohibition, wasn't it?
Well, it was almost like prohibition. They wanted the land used for hydroplane races.
It said that they could, you could have, I can't remember the exact language, but one of the things that you could have a vendor for was cigars. So maybe we could have edible cigars or something.
I don't know, but I'd like a crew of volunteers.
But it's, it sounds like it's caught up in a bit of, I, I don't think, and I could be wrong here, but I don't think it's just Ron Chandler saying, I don't want food there. I think it is something the city attorney found in his research or something and, and they're trying to figure out how to fix it. But we all know that government moves very slow and this could take years, so I think with some encouragement, maybe it could happen faster.
And that's why I would like some help to.
Right.
Nudge the council to at least this year, let it go with food vendors and the typical vendors that they've had before. And I don't, I don't think the town can afford to lose events that bring in 100 people a year.
Well, and I don't understand why they would have gone to all that effort to build the stage and now they're increasing the playground and.
Absolutely ridiculous that they don't use the park.
I think that I, I'm hopeful that it can work out. It's just people need encouraged in the right direction because there's, they have a lot on their plate.
If it's gonna have any volunteers.
Raise your hand, everybody.
If it's able to go, I would really appreciate it.
Well, we'll try to have a letter to them. Are, are you guys cool with that?
I'm in agreement.
Yeah.
I, I think we need to be able to do that for any of the events that we are, whether it be the Devil's Lake Dash or any of the other events we may choose to.
Well, and not, I mean, yeah, it, it benefits the whole community of anybody that wants to do something at the lake, which is one of our things in the Devil's Lake Plan of to promote the lake, so.
Especially if they want to be recognized for having a pristine lake. And it's Monday, 6:00.
Monday, 6:00 here at the council chambers. So anybody out there watching, if you can come and support Miles, that'd be great.
Six.
So Josh, would you? So Josh, would you mind drafting a letter and then maybe just emailing it and we can sign it electronically or whatever?
Sounds like a lot of work. No problem, I'll have it out this weekend, probably by the end of tomorrow.
Awesome, thanks.
No problem.
Thanks, Miles.
Thank you.
Are there any other non-agenda items from the board? I had one reminder. Our Lake Stewart Award is coming up, or should be for last year, and that's to honor volunteerism and recognize some people who've done work on the lake. Last year, we recognized Brian Green. And I believe the banquet is, by, put on by the Chamber of Commerce is in April, and so we need to come up with some candidates for the Lake Stewart Award and for next meeting, I think, if we do that.
And the community can nominee, nominate people as well, not just the board, right?
Right.
And you can call your nominees into Josh at the office or email him?
Yes, they, I think you can do that. I believe that we have a form at, for the community that would like to do that too at the office. I believe there's something with regard to that.
Can we get that form up on the website, Josh?
Not a problem.
And so, we need, as a board, we need to, to address that for next meeting.
Great.
I think we have some good candidates from last year that I, that I think we should recognize, but I, you know, I, I think we should entertain all different nominees, so.
Yeah.
Let's see. Any other non-agenda items?
I do have one thing, Kent. I think we need to have a discussion, so we have it in the minutes, to remove Tom Wood from the TLC account, so I can have everyone sign at the same time and get that credit card taken care of as well there.
So we made a motion last month to add you, so now you need us to remove Tom?
Yeah.
Or it just needs to be noted in the minutes?
You just, yeah, it just needs to go in. You can make a motion if you want, if you want to make it more official.
Is that easier for you, if there's a motion? So I move that we remove Tom Wood from our bank accounts as a signee, and we've already added you.
Yeah.
So, that's the end of my motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's passed. Okay, good. Now we can finally get that taken care of.
I'm working.
Did you ever get a credit card?
That is part of it, so you, so everyone doesn't have to go in separately two different times. They're going to do the credit card and this account change paperwork at the same time.
Terrific.
Great. All right. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Do I have any? Jack, would you like to?
I have one more example of the city's interesting way of doing business. Is that better?
Yes, that's much better. Thanks, Jack.
I'm in the LID that connected to the sewers, and it's been a couple, or at least a year ago, we were asked to contribute multiple thousands of dollars for this thing. And the city went through and they went, got all the stuff and put the sewers in, put the flags up everywhere, the roads, and the last two years, I've been trying to find out, how do you hook up to this thing? Now, Brian was saying they got to put out a letter. Well, that's 15, 15 minutes we'll put out a letter. So what, what is the hangup?
I haven't tried to hook up yet, Jack, so I, I mean, I didn't know there was a hangup.
I, I called Terry and he didn't return my calls, and I've got potential contractors from another guy in, in his office, and the contractors have said, well, what, you know, the city hasn't released it yet. They've got to release, they've got to give a letter to the people before they can do it. Is that the letter you're talking about?
I don't remember saying that. I, I mean, I thought you.
Are you connected to the sewers? Pardon? Are you connected to the sewers?
No, not yet.
Why?
Well, this just happened what, a couple of months ago, and I haven't moved on it yet.
Do you have a letter from the city saying you can, can, can connect?
Well, we can all connect. I haven't heard anything about needing a letter from, from a, I mean, are you saying that there's a legal requirement for, for a letter from, before you can hook up?
The contractors told me the city hasn't authorized to connect, partially because they haven't decided on which pump to use.
Well, they, they have decided. It's part of the spec, yeah, it's called the E1235 or something. They spec a very particular pump because they want it to be able to meet certain requirements and to perform certain functions, like, for instance, it has to have a generator receptacle on it in case of a power outage.
So they've got to have a crew that's going to repair them too, right?
Yeah, that's part of their plan.
Yeah. Do you know how many people have connected?
I don't think anybody has yet.
Isn't that strange?
Well, we have, we have three years to do it, it's within that three-year period that you can finance the whole thing, basically, the SDCs and everything.
So the city takes two years and 364 days, and then we've got one day to do it?
Well, for, one of the things I've done since I hooked up three lots is buy the lot back next door so I can do it. So, you know, I mean, but, yeah, I mean, I, I know that there are six.
Can the board inquire to the, to the sewage, Lila, what's her name?
Lila Bradley, the Public Works Director.
And find out what the holdup is and what we have to do and, you know, who we can contact and stuff? Because it's just sitting out there, the flags are up, you know, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, I have no idea.
And we've had all this commotion about how septic's are awful for the lake and they're, you know, spewing this stuff, and now we can't, the, the city says they're going to do everything they can to facilitate sewers, and now they're not.
And as far as you know, Brian, everything's done construction-wise?
Yeah.
And so what you're saying is that you, you called them and said, "Hook me up."
Right.
And, and that's as far as you've got?
Yeah, it had to be passed by, they had the pressure tested and everything else, and had to be passed by the city and the UQ.
But that happened quite a while ago, didn't it?
That's what it did.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I wonder if anybody else has called.
Maybe somebody in the audience has.
Oh, there's a hand.
If you could come forward, if you have some additional information?
I think you probably are going to need a building permit. I mean, I would go down and decide if I have the permit.
A building permit to hook up to the sewer?
Well, I mean, a, a form of building permit, not like a permit for building a house, but some kind of a permit.
Steve Brown, so I can give you a little bit of today's history, twice at the city hall here on the LID and trying to get some answers. So it was August 19th that the resolution was passed to approve the cost of the roads to the neighbors in the LID. So what the city had offered was for our part of the roads and the line to be put in was a $8,000 lien against our properties, which we could finance. And many of the homeowners did choose to finance that at $43 a month. So I think what Jack is frustrated with, and what I experienced today, was to understand where the city is if we want to hook up to it. So what I hear Jack saying is, is he wanted to hook up to the sewer and wanted to know if it was ready and what the costs were. My venture into city hall today was about purchasing a piece of property in the neighborhood and what my obligation was for the seller of the property and whether or not I could end up assuming the agreement that the current owner had agreed to, to finance the road portion of it. And what I found out after going through several level, levels within the city is they don't even know if that can be assumed, if that obligation is to the buyer.
So the name of the rent of the property has got to be assumed. You buy the property and you, you're going to have to pay.
It's what you sign off, what the city agreed to finance for the road portion of it. So the property owners that chose not to pay the $8,000 fee for their portion of the road and sewer to be put in the road was financed. And it also had an obligation that after the resolution was approved on the 19th of August, that any properties that were sold, that the new person had to hook up to sewer. Doesn't matter if their septic tank was good or whatever, you have to hook up to it immediately. And two points that I want to bring just to the attention of the board is, is that the city can't even tell me if you can approve, the prior owner decided to finance this through the city over 20 years at 2.75% at $43.66, so can't even tell that the buyer would be able to assume that, nor that could they tell me that I could hook up to the sewer today.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the seller have to pay that loan off upon the sale of the property if it's a lien?
Well.
It's just negotiable.
Well, here's the thing, it clouds the title.
Buy it, submit it to the lien and pay the court.
If I put on an offer, here's, here's what I'm confused, and it's not this board's obligation, so I don't want to bring that up.
Sure, I mean, but it's informational.
So much, but as we get into these LIDs, these are some of the complications. So if I'm buying a piece of property for cash, I want clean title.
Sure.
I can't get clean title because of these minor things are not worked out with the city yet. And so I think.
You can get a clean title by paying off the lien, or, or the buyer.
Either I pay off the lien or the buyer does.
Or the seller does.
The seller, yeah.
But even the real estate people in town doesn't know where the negotiating tool is. You know, I'm considering purchasing a property from an out-of-state owner.
This is a bare lot, I think?
I choose not to divulge that information.
If there's an existing home, my point is, you're going to have to hook up when you buy the property.
But we can't hook up, that's what I'm saying, Brian. I couldn't get confirmation from the city, and that's what Jack is trying to communicate to the board is, there isn't a clear passover after the resolution has been accepted to the property owners within the neighborhood. And I was also told that the county plumber, because when you're dealing with septic tanks and abandonment of septic tanks.
Decommissioning.
So decommissioning, you know, the, the pump company says you can put it within a decommissioned septic tank and pack around, but the city hasn't approved that either yet. And so there's a lot of things that, I want a transaction that if I'm paying cash for something, it can just close and I can move on because the LID states that I have to hook up to the sewer, and it's not working out on the upside of what's supposed to happen. So what's the city's responsibility? What's the county going to say? And work as LID, people who were part of that shouldn't have to work for 18 months to try to figure out or navigate. We would think that in the future, when we're doing LIDs, that all parties get together to make it seamless and make it positive. I've been an advocate of these LIDs being right for the lake, being right for the community, but it has to be a positive experience for me and elderly, knowing how it's going to end up being.
I, I'd be happy to reach out to Lila and email and ask her for some clarification, you know, on what the steps are, where we're at, so that we have some answers to those questions for, you know, not just you guys, but I'm sure other people out there have similar questions.
Well, the real estate people today was.
And if we're going to add to them.
I think I might just, this is the first I've, I've heard there's a problem. Nobody's come to me. I, I haven't attempted to start the process of hooking up yet. Haven't had anybody tell me that it's a problem to, to get hooked up. So now that I'm hearing this, I mean, I think what I might do is just start the process myself.
Well, it's really the package. I think we, as a board, want this to be positive. We want the package to be seamless for anybody because we know environmentally it's right. And I think that the city has agreed to finance and help owners out because it was the right thing to do. And I think everybody has shown their cards on what's right. And what frustrates me in business and sometimes in personal life is, is that we put together a package that we think is right, but when we try to implement it, what happens is we have obstacles that carry it out. And I think when it's people's personal lives or it's their investments, never was the intent, and so I think as we put together LIDs, we can do a better job of making sure we have the total package together.
You know, one thing about this, from start to finish, it's been, it's been the first one. And so, everybody's feeling their way along and, you know, we felt our way through the process of getting it approved, getting the sewer installed, getting the, et cetera. Now we're at the point of, I guess, we still need to feel our way through the initial.
Implementation of it, it's how do, how do we apply it? And anything.
City will learn from that, just like they learned from the whole LID process to this point. And somebody's just going to have to be the first one. I guess, you know, I've been happy to be that person from the beginning.
Well, as the board here, and, well, I talked to Councilor Walke tonight too, sitting on the, the seat. I don't think, because nobody has gone forward but talking to Jack tonight and me being down here, you know, two times today, wanting to invest in the community and make something happen, and the answers or the path isn't there. It's not a clear path. It should, it should be in statute, it should be in resolution, but it's not. So when we put together packages like this, I think we have to start with the end in mind and we look at what we've done and how friendly is it going to be to the user and the real estate people? Because I have a leader that's pretty frustrated too, not knowing.
Well, and the, the players need to, to hold together. So, you know, we have an obligation to, you know, to do our end of it, but then we, we need to make sure that the city keeps their obligation to fulfill their end of it. And, you know, if, if nobody has come in to try to sign up, quite honestly, I can see where it was, you know, they probably thought they had it done.
Right.
And it wasn't done, and then questions get asked, and it's like, so, I mean, I can see both sides of it, but, but it needs to get done.
I think both Jack and I, it's just letting you guys know, certainly not your obligation, but any help that you could do. There's a lot of property in that LID that will probably, in these economic times, hopefully, work out for both parties, and any help you could do, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm on it, Steve, because I, I want to, I want to see it happen, and I'm, I want to do it myself, so I might as well do it. And it hasn't been the highest priority with a few other things, but it is a high enough priority.
Just got to move up their list.
I'll make it a higher priority now.
We appreciate your commitment. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Steve and Jack. Are there any other, any other comments from the?
Are there any other, any other comments from the audience? Board announcements or comments? I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and appreciate your support through all the different things that are taking place, and look forward to seeing you real soon. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kent.